This is all healthy. Okay, we're gonna come, I think Sally's coming down and Mike Radke and Ben Steen are gonna join her. And it's a presentation on English Language Development Standards for English Language Learners. So it kinda picks up a little bit on where Mary Ann was going earlier. And wait till we're set up before I ... Just gonna provide information on the replacement of Michigan's current English Language Proficiency Standards and I'll turn it right over to Sally going.
As you may know, that part of our ESEA flexibility, that we needed to adopt a set of English Language Proficiency Standards that would then be aligned with the English Language Proficiency Assessment, all of which are aligned to the Career and College Ready Standards. So I really need to give kudos to Mike and his staff and Vince and his staff. They have spent, it's probably been a couple of years where they've really been looking at standards that will meet what we think we need here in Michigan, looking and investigating the options. And after extensive work and incredible amount of input from our stakeholder groups, there seems to be a very strong consensus that we adopt. Because we needed a new acronym, we now have the WEDA ELD Standards. So we will walk you through what those are, but that's actually World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. So with that, let me turn it over to Vince.
Good morning, everybody. I really appreciate this, as an aside, everyone arranging this board meeting to coincide with one of our big events for the year, which is first day of MEEP testing.
That's right.
Thank you for joining me on one of our big events for the year. So just a couple notes of context and then to pick up with what Sally introduced here, this is an exciting conversation for us. The last time the board addressed this issue of what standards in terms of content for English Language Development, English Language Proficiency was 2004. And so Sally mentioned, you know, adopting the current college ready standards and the Common Core, this board did in 2010 and other things there. And our state population of English learners has also changed significantly. So when I joined the department in 2005, and the first year we administered our current English Language Proficiency Assessment was in 2006, we were testing around 35,000 English learners in the state. This past year, we tested 72,566 and we think our total population is pushing 80,000. And so we know that through information like from the US Census and other sources, that our population of English learners has grown tremendously. The population seems to be stabilizing now around that 80,000 student mark. But we have, I think we have the fastest growing population of students whose native language is Arabic. We're also getting, in terms of the calls that come in for Mike's team and my team, we have a lot more districts wrestling with students coming in that are much older. So coming in at middle school age, high school age, that have no prior exposure to English. And so as we think about aligning the standards, the state systems, the instruction, that we just had that conversation for early childhood students, it's, we're happy to be here having the same conversation for our population of English learners. Mike?
Yes. So today we're proposing the adoption of English Language Development Standards to replace the Michigan standards that were approved eight years ago, 10 years ago, okay? WEDA is the World Class Instruction Design and Assessment System. This is a national consortia, basically run out of Wisconsin, University of Wisconsin. And they, they basically have done a very credible job for a number of years and now with a growing number of states, about 30 states are onboard with the WEDA standards. The flexibility application requires us to adopt standards that are aligned to our college and career-ready standards. And the two offices have been working for a long time now together with our advisory committee, which has been outstanding in its representation and in its hard work to consider these standards. So the team is really led by Shereen Tabrizi from my office and Jennifer Paul from the Bureau of Assessment and College Ready.
I say Shereen.
So Shereen and Jen, Art Kuster and a number of other people here in the office coordinating this initiative. But with tremendous credit to this committee of really high-quality representative of the entire system. So schools, districts, ISDs, the college community that has an interest in this, and then a number of community organizations have been at the table as well. So this is, one of the driving forces behind this initiative is Title III Federal Program for English Language Acquisition. We are required under Title III to establish English Language Proficiency Standards and objectives derived from four domains that are related to acquisition of English, that is speaking, listening, reading, writing, and cover all of the grades, K-12, with these standards. These standards also have to be aligned to our four core content areas. So English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. Okay? We have, and then we have to, once we've got the standards, then we have to align those to the assessments. So this is kind of an integrated effort with a very credible model to accomplish all this and gain the benefits of some deep experience. We, as is normal when we're proposing standards for you, we've done, we've taken a look at some independent alignment studies. One done by the University of Oklahoma, which demonstrated very significant alignment in both the domains and in the content areas. And then we've had our own group of experts take a look at the WEDA standards and the Common Core state standards and the alignment to English Language Arts and Math. And again, there, our own team found that there was substantial alignment and basically resulted in this recommendation.
Some of the other pieces there to follow up with what Mike was describing there, this, so November of 2011 was when we really brought the question forward to our English Learner Advisory Group of should we move in this direction? We had, as a reminder, we'd adopted the Common Core standards, this board did, in June of 2010. So we had about 18 months of experience of having conversations across the state of what do these look like, let's think about the increased rigor that the Common Core is requiring, the, this conversation of across content standards. So we have concepts in the Common Core and as part of our career and college ready conversation about text complexity, for example, in English Language Arts and how that plays out in things like science and social studies. And so then having this advisory group work with us and thinking through pieces like that for this English learner population that we've described has been a very important thing. So multiple times over those, from adopting the Common Core to this November 2011, we had framed the conversation, engaged in with them. But this is when we really brought the question to them about should we really pursue what WEDA's developed, thinking about the ESEA flexibility pieces and what that might look like around that time. And so as we all talked about, again, this alignment of systems and standards across the state for all of our populations, where we really started to really focus on that. And Mike mentioned the unanimous recommendation of this really dedicated, very passionate group of strong stakeholders to move in this direction and bring forth this recommendation to the board here. And Mike and I were joking that we couldn't remember if there was another time, or at least the last time, where we had a unanimous recommendation from a real strong group of stakeholders. So we always were able to get to some level of consensus, but this one was, it just, to that aside, very poignant for us that work with these groups a lot, that it was very clear that this was the direction that they thought would be appropriate. Some of the rationale pieces, and this came both from terms of feedback we received from stakeholders as well as folks like Shereen and Jen and Mike and I, as we looked at what was available and where WEDA was going and where our current standards were, things like that. We really spent some time talking with folks, both that are running the WEDA consortium through University of Wisconsin, Wisconsin Department of Education, and also other states that have implemented this. So Mike talked about a number of other states. The current count is 30 states and territories that have adopted this standard, so having this conversation. And then 27 of those groups have already committed to using the assessments. And there are others, because of what Sally and Mike mentioned, with ESEA flexibility and moving to this aligned to the Common Core type of conversation are thinking about that. And so what's that driven and what we've really focused in on with those other states and people that are operationalizing WEDA all day, every day is this research piece. And so they're really coming together with a very strong research focus, research agenda, all about career and college readiness for English language learners. And so as we think about our state population, this issue that we talk about quite a bit, where we have these older students coming in, where our time to have them in our system and push them as far as we can towards this career and college-ready, these benchmarks, this conversation is limited for a lot of these students. And as we think about the research that has never been done before on this specific population, towards that end, the types of resources that we're able to think about leveraging with 30 states, all pulling on the rope in the same direction is something that is a real important part of why we think a move in this direction is appropriate. We've talked about the literacy across the content standards. So as we think about English Language Acquisition and English Language Learners as they come in, what types of linguistic elements do they need to see in instruction, pedagogy, curricular materials, all these types of things to support their acquisition of English, not just in English Language Arts and Mathematics, but our other content areas like Science and Social Studies? There's a lot of very poignant and, you know, challenging aspects to that, that again, this consortium is, we're seeing a lot of good efforts toward that. We've talked about the alignment between the WEDA and the Common Core. Another set of standards developed by a group are these Teaching English to Speakers of Other Languages, or these TESOL standards. These are standards developed by the National Organization of Teachers, of English Learners. And so they're a little bit different than the very, almost strict content standards we find in the Common Core. These have a lot more of instructional pieces, pedagogy, around the teaching of English Language Development. So they're not, you know, exactly repetitive or anything, or redundant with the Common Core. But between these teaching standards and the Common Core and the WEDA, all having really strong alignment, there's a real, some real synergy there with, again, the whole system of what we're looking at being able to do for students in this population. And the one thing that really stands out to us and other states, and it's expanded rapidly, I'd say in the last two or three years, is this last bullet here, where we've got 30 states, it's kind of the market demand, we have 30 states all needing the same types of resources, all moving in this direction and think towards things like online assessment, career and college readiness for English learners very quickly. Really, this power of a state-led consortium has really produced a wealth of instructional resources, professional development around transition to these standards and assessments, where to go in that direction. And so that's something that is really a great opportunity to take advantage of, thinking about the timeline here. So field services, Mike's team, as he mentioned, after we had this unanimous recommendation from the English Learner Advisory Committee to move in this direction, Mike's team brought in some educators that have tons of this, you know, content expertise, both in the Common Core, our current English Proficiency Standards, familiar with the teacher instructional standards represented by the TESOL, and really did a more in-depth, detailed kind of gap analysis between these different, you know, pieces of content here. And this process is where our standards that were adopted in 2004 really started to show their age, if you will, and really became, again, poignant to us that a move in adopting standards that are much more current, aligned towards the Common Core and our career and college-ready conversation, for example, is appropriate in terms of timing, things like that. And this group of educators that came together to help us do that deep dive was very helpful because they came out with the recommendations for how to roll this out statewide, what types of professional development, what we'd need to make a shift from our standards from 2004 to the WEDA ones, what types of conversations, not just about content, but curriculum, instruction, assessment, that we need to go along with the professional development plan to get us to being able to, again, get up and running quickly, but also in a very thorough manner. It's kind of a dense timeline slide here, I'll walk through. What we wanted to do is this kind of a proposed timeline that we put together between our two offices, along the lines of, you see that 2012, 13 school year there? If the board, you know, would come back, have this discussion here, come back in November and I think for action or vote at that time. So if the standards were adopted by the board in November, what would we then do over the next three school years? And so we have a lot of, on the top there has to do with rolling out the standards, professional development. We plan to put together a series of WebExs all around these standards and how they're different, how they're similar to what we've had before, and then really start a strong professional development campaign that talks about the transition, introducing them, implementing them, how to integrate these things, how to think, carry these forward through the other content areas, like Science and Social Studies, those pieces there. And then the bottom half of the timeline gives a sense of some of the assessment activities. And so as we're thinking about all the other assessment activities around the Common Core, like Smarter Balance, for example, how could we do this in a kind of an orderly way that helps us with the conversation of moving online? But also gives us an opportunity to become engaged early enough to really inform the development of these online assessments for WEDA and things like that. So the one thing that we actually have done is, you see the first bullet on the bottom left there, says Assets Consortium Joint. And that's about, it's a group of most of these same states that are engaged in WEDA, all coming together around online assessment for English learners. And so this hasn't committed us to adopting the standards, hasn't committed us to using any WEDA products or anything like that, but we feel very strongly that it's appropriate for us to be at the table early to inform the development of these online assessment systems and reporting systems. Again, with our unique population of students with Arabic as their native language, for example, we feel a strong need to advocate for that. So going forward, and we've also had an online pilot assessment for our current English Language Proficiency Assessment for the last two years. And we've had, last year we had almost 9,000 students participate in that, and it's been a good experience for the several districts that have participated in that. So we've been thinking about this whole moving online effort and the very unique issues for English learners and so participating in that. And so we'll go through every bullet on the assessment piece there, but it's just the sense of this orderly transition and moving towards online assessment. And then in that spring of 2015 is where we would anticipate having the operational online Smarter Balance assessments and then also these, for the first year, these operational online WEDA assessments. So again, another opportunity to inform the development of them throughout here. So that was our proposed timeline and contact information here. And again, I just wanted to echo Mike's comments. We, Shereen and Jen have just done tremendous work on this, both from quality and also the speed and depth of their work. And so this has been, they've been a tremendous asset to this project.
Great. Mike?
Thank you, guys. Comments, questions from board members? Eileen and Mary Ann? Kathleen and Dan?
One of the downsides of having members have their own laptops is that if you didn't check out the WEDA site before, it's an interesting website. But it appears that there are 26 members and three more who've adopted. Michigan's not in that group right now. I think the thing that's the most reinforcing for me on this, this is, if you pardon me, this is Alphabet City for us, and you've done as good a job as I think any human beings could to try and explain it to us. There's nothing here you can touch, though. So we're taking it on faith. But the faith is supported by testing in the field since 2004 and 26 other states who believe in it, three more who believe in it enough to adopt, and we would become the fourth, apparently, on their website in that group. So I'm willing to take a leap of faith based upon our experts' willingness to take on a lot of work that appears to be working in other states.
Thank you. It was Mary Ann, next, please.
Well, I'm very excited about all of this. And I'm, I want to make sure, though, that we're talking about a transition from a native language to English that allows the student to retain their native language. Is that happening? Is that ...
Yes. I mean, we're, we have another goal in the state, and that is to make our native English speakers also multilingual. So we certainly want those that are, come to us with another language to retain that.
Okay. I think we all realize it's taken a while, but that by forcing a student to drop their native language, we are hurting them intellectually as they grow. So I'm very happy about that. I'm also wondering what this does with the teaching standards that we've established over the years? Will this entail a large change in that, teaching standards for global languages?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, I think there's a large professional development.
Yeah. If you're, I mean, there will be a transition for teachers, okay? But that's why we've laid out this kind of plan to help teachers understand the standards, make adjustments in instruction, and be ready for the assessments when we make that shift. There's all, there's also some very, I mean, like, most of these kids are in general education classrooms. They're not being taught in their native language, basically. They're not being taught content in their native language. And so there's, there's been a three or four-year initiative to help general ed teachers adjust their instruction for the students who don't speak English sitting in their classrooms. And that initiative will continue.
Okay. I'm, that was part of what I wondered, but what I was really trying to get at is we, we on the board have established standards for individual languages, for the teaching of those languages. Are we actually talking about the same thing or, okay? So what do we have to redo all of those standards then?
No, I think what we're talking, there's, for the languages that are required, the world languages that are required for graduation, those, the teachers that are teaching those languages still have to go through their entire certification program.
Okay.
But what we're talking here now are students that are, so that's one thing, is to teach, let's say, Mike Radke, who's a native English speaker, teach him how to teach, to speak Arabic. What we're talking about here is that these are the English language learners. So they're already coming to us with a language, and now what we're trying to do is teach them English. So it's a different set of skills and a different set of standards.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen, please.
Yeah, I think this is really very interesting, and I'm glad to learn about this WYDA, you call it.
WEDA.
Or WEDA. Yeah. I wonder, 33 other states adopted it. Why, are we coming late to the party, or was the reason WEDA didn't do it sooner?
I don't think we're coming late to the party. We've been studying this for a long time. And it was, it has been an option right back in 2004, when they started. At the time, we had already invested in our own standards and assessment for English Language Learners. And so making, the question was, when do we make a shift? When do we upgrade our standards and then do we make the shift? And we basically saw this Common Core Career and College Readiness Standards coming, and we said, let's not change too fast or too slow. Now seems to be the right time to do it.
I would add to that, Mike, that also at that time, we certainly did not have consensus from our stakeholders that that was, would have been an appropriate move. So, well, Mike's absolutely right. We've been talking about it since 2004, 2005, but we had a lot of folks that really thought our standards at that time and assessment at that time was more appropriate than the original WEDA standards, which have evolved over time. And Mike's right, really since this 2010, where lots of states have tackled the career and college-ready conversation, Common Core standards is where the majority of those 30 states have really committed to this common effort.
Okay. And I wondered, you know, I was impressed that the committee is unanimous in its recommendation. That is impressive. But we frequently get the names of the people who are on the committee. Could we find out from you who those people are?
Sure.
Okay. And I think I had one more question. I was curious if Linda Forwood shop was involved in working on this with you, because it does seem to be curriculum.
Go ahead.
There is a ton of synergy there, absolutely, with the curriculum unit and Linda's shop, especially as we think about implementing the Common Core and making progress with that throughout here and how that plays out in things like world languages instruction and our whole statewide conversation of curriculum, instruction, and assessment and things like that. That's absolutely, we're in discussions with how that should play out.
She wasn't, her office wasn't involved with you and this?
Mike's office and mine, because of the Title III piece that Mike oversees and the assessment piece, which is a big part of this, we've taken the lead on it. It's definitely been a department conversation.
She wasn't, no, she or her colleagues were involved. Okay.
Well, and you may know, this is a particular interest of Linda's as well. I mean, she has a, Linda has a personal interest in, in English Language Learners. She used to be the office supervisor for that, but she's got a personal interest in it as well, so.
So she was.
She's got her fingers in it, yeah.
Okay.
I think Dan was next, and then Richard.
I think I have four questions. Four.
How about one question with four subparts?
All right.
Quick enough?
I'll do that. Okay. One question with four subparts. Not sure how to weave all these together, so I'm just gonna go A, 1A. You started off, so thank you. You started off the presentation by sharing that growth in English Language Learner students statewide has gone from about 35,000 to 72,000. Are there particular geographic areas that you would highlight for us where that population has grown most in, or are there particular native language, native languages that you would identify where the student body has grown most? Is it primarily Spanish? Is it Arabic? What are the native languages that issue? I guess I should ask all four at once, although they're busy, so go for it.
Do you want, if you don't have any information, we can always get it for you.
In terms of the growth of the languages, we'd have to go back and look at it, but...
The geographic, we can get that back for you.
And the geographic question, we're starting to see this spread pretty rapidly all over the state. So there may only be two English Language Learners in rural, a rural district, but the civil rights law requires that they both learn English and get access to the regular content field. So this is pervasive in the state. Obviously, there's pockets where they're concentrated, but...
But you're seeing it as a statewide challenge?
Yes.
But we'll get you more specifics on the languages and the specific geographic areas as well.
Don't hurt yourselves trying to do it, just curiosity. Second is, so I'm, I don't know WEDA at all, and completely trust your judgment, I'm just curious about what other options exist in this world of assessment around English Language Learners or for English Language Learners? And I just want to make sure that I actually understand what we're talking about here. So we're talking about assessments that are given to English Language Learners before they have to take the state mandated assessment, so in the future, the Smarter Balance, currently the MEEP. Is that right? the MEEP, is that right? And these assessments can be used both for placement purposes at the front end and as kind of interim progress assessment in acquisition of English?
That's a big question. That's a lot. So for the, I think it was your first point, of what other assessment options exist or have existed out there? So, a number of states, so, Mike and I were describing that, you know, WIDA started becoming operational in 2004, 2005. A few states were on the ground floor with that and used that, so I think it was 15 or 17 states initially. Other states adopted the WIDA content standards, which is what we're describing here, but then built their own assessments. Idaho, for example, is one of their. And then kind of the third camp were states like Michigan that had our own English language proficiency content piece and our own assessment to match that. And so, now, over time, we've seen more and more states, the sustainability of doing everything by themselves has become, certainly, especially in the last couple of years, due to state fiscal challenges, become untenable to maintain that same level of effort. While the collective capacity of more and more states getting on board with this common effort through WIDA and having that be a very quality effort. So lots of research, lots of resources dedicated towards that. We'd be having a different conversation if, part of our bringing this recommendation to you is our belief that the quality there is not just very good, but looking forward to the statewide issues of where these kids are, the professional development pieces. It's more and richer than we could do ourselves anymore. So that's a big part of that. And I've lost your B or C part of your question.
This was, this was B, the second subpart of B. I'm going with three, I'm trying to combine into three questions. It was...
Lawyeries. This is lawyeries.
Right.
I encourage to make it seem like they're fewer questions.
I'm working hard at it. The second question was, these are the assess, so, just to make sure that I'm clear on this, just because I could be mistaken, and I want to make sure I understand it. These are the assessments that schools would be required to give students who are not yet, because they're new to the system, required to take the MEEP or Smarter Balance, is that right? Like, for the first, is it two years before you have to take that? What's the...
You have to demonstrate through the English language proficiency assessment that you are English language proficient, and then you move into the tests like MEEP and things.
Is there a requirement in terms of how long before that has, like, are you required to move into taking the MEEP at some point?
Yeah. Essentially, Title III requires, has three targets. One is, are you proficient in English? The second one is, are you making progress to being proficient in English? And the third one is then, how are you doing on English, pardon me, English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies? So essentially, we, our teachers have to be teaching content, the regular core content, to these kids while they're learning English. And then, essentially, this, the standards that we're setting up here, or adjusting, essentially are an upgraded version of all of that. And then the assessments will measure the standards. So essentially, what you're being asked to do here is endorse the standards, and then we can put the assessments in place.
And in terms of the types of assessments you're getting at, with the benchmark ones or things, so, currently, WIDA has, like we do, they have a screening instrument, and then the end-of-year summative test. The things that they're exploring through WIDA are developing an alternate assessment. So like, we have our My Access test, and reading, and math, and science for students with severe disabilities that can't participate appropriately in the MEEP. So WIDA's looking at developing an assessment like that for English language learners with significant disabilities. And then also, they are looking at moving forward as part of this larger going online system, what types of, throughout the school year, progress monitoring tools or indicators could be developed to support, in the same vein as Smarter Balance is considering, are our kids on track to do well in the end-of-year summative, and support the conversation of individual student growth, not just on reading and math and writing, but also on their English language acquisition. So, that, I'm glad you brought that up, because being, the timing-wise, as just now, all these states are really starting to focus energy on moving online and constructing those, this gives us an opportunity to weigh in heavily with our, you know, strong staff at the department here on influencing the development of those different tools.
Why don't I, I'll, you can call me again later for...
One of those questions was one that I was gonna ask, so you just save us all the questions. Good job.
But I'm willing to wait and come back to questions, my subparts C after others.
Richard, and then Eileen.
I was wondering if you could give me two or three examples of how the WIDA standards differ from the current standards? Like, is, like, do you, is there more content, or is there a difference in vocabulary, or how reading comprehension is mainly focused on?
Maybe Shereen?
Shereen, come down and join us, please.
Just two or three to give us a thought, a feel for how the new standards differ from the old.
Did I say it was afternoon?
Yes.
Well, the current WIDA standards include content standards as well. The current, what we have currently, English language proficiency standards focus on only language, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, of course comprehension across fourth skill. But the WIDA standards also incorporate standards such as social studies, science, language arts, and math. And that's what we want to do, because when we teach kids English, we also want to incorporate and infuse content as well. Otherwise, they'll be learning English in isolation, and then they are behind in catching up with their peers on the content standards. That's one difference. The second difference, the WIDA standards include a lot of rigor and critical thinking skill that our language standards currently don't have at the same level. And we definitely, as we prepare our kids for career in college, we've got to focus on critical thinking right from the start. Another difference is that the WIDA standards are grade-level assessment versus the ALPA standards currently, or the ELP standards are grade span. So we have K-2 standards, while WIDA has kindergarten, first grade, second grade, in alignment with the Common Core. And the biggest piece is the alignment with the Common Core. We're now embarked on the college, career in college ready standards, the Common Core standards, and we definitely want to make sure that all teachers are working with English learners across content areas at all times. This is a way of partnering between English language learner teachers and regular education teachers in the mainstream, working together toward ensuring that all students, English language learners included, achieve the rigorous standard that we expect of all students. So that's in a nutshell.
That's good.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Eileen, please.
Again, accessing the website is dangerous. So, I noticed that you're giving, if you go back to the slide that shows the timelines for implementation, you're giving the WIDA app, the Access Placement Test, as part of, I think, a field test in this coming academic year? But I wanted to make sure that it's actually given, it would be so smart to give it to children as they enter school and to place the year where it is, rather than waiting until the access assessment is given, which is an annual statewide assessment. And is that going to happen? You're training teachers in it, apparently, in how to give it.
Through this, yeah. So say we, again, adopt in November, and then throughout this school year, we train people on things like the APT, which is the screening tool, things like that. We have, we think enough time and a good plan to get people up to speed, ready, familiar with the instruments. Just like any statewide program, there's, again, back to MEEP administration today, there's manuals and shipping distribution and accessing online, all these types of logistic things to wrestle with. And then we have, for that purpose, you mentioned, early in the school year, using it for the screener's intended purpose of identifying which kids are, you know, kind of in which buckets, instructionally a little bit and things like that.
We're sorry, your conference is ending now. Please hang up.
Is our meeting over? We have it set up there for early next school year. So we come back to school, we get these kids, and then we would be using it in an operational sense to do just what you're describing.
That's not my question. My question is if a child enters school in 2014 for the first time, can we, do we have access through our membership in the consortium to be able to give the APT the second he walks in the door? So the teachers aren't struggling in science and math classes with that child who's very far behind in being able to use the language, but actually speaks English well enough, that it's confusing.
The answer is yes. The screener is different than the, kind of the end-of-year, the access, the big summative test that has a real structured window, things like that. The screener is available, and as kids come in, we hope that teachers immediately pick it up and start using it.
Cool. We good?
Dan, I forgot part C.
Yes, thanks. So, yeah, let me just, I had to follow up to B, but I'm gonna let that go. C, oh, so I hear from folks in the Latino community in Detroit often on the subject of bilingual instruction. I just want to, for my own edification here, figure out if that, are there, is there state law or state policy out of the department that prohibits or impacts bilingual instruction, or is that strictly a local issue? Go ahead.
Well, we do not prohibit bilingual instruction as a state. It is up to the local districts to determine what kind of delivery they would like to choose, as long as they are focusing also on English language acquisition. So, there's a lot of research out there on second language acquisition and the positive impact of proficiency in native language on second language acquisition. So it's an additive model. It is proven. It's just a matter of cost and having the staff that can deliver such instruction without jeopardizing the allotted time for language arts and math and science and social studies. Takes a lot of good team effort, creative thinking, out-of-the-box kind of delivery. There are some programs out there, several districts have chosen to provide bilingual instruction. And there are successful schools that, one of the schools that we actually acknowledged as high-performing last year and the year before, who has bilingual instruction in the Wayne County area. So it's up to the local districts how they do that.
Thank you.
Okay. We're good. Great job. Thank you.
Back to you in November.
And, right, back in November. And can I, before we break for lunch, might I say that, no, you guys can go. That it's, we have more in common than we have in differences. And I thought one thing, maybe Vince and Mike, before you leave, I think if Board Member Varner and Board Member Zile would join me and Vince and Mike in our annual goatee picture contest, we could show the commonality that we have, which is beyond just differences in some other things.
We have great old models, you know?
Oh, am I supposed to do this before? Okay. Thank you, Varner. This is, this is item C, which is, we usually try to do before lunch, and that's, are there any, so our guys can get ready. Are there any discussion regarding criteria for grant programs that we'll bring to you in the afternoon?
Yeah, I think I had some questions, actually. I don't find them. I have questions outside those.
Okay, great. So, good? And John, what do you think? Time for...
1:15?
1:15. Sound good to the board? We'll be back, our audience, our folks out in the audience, we'll be back at 1:15. For those of you who are new, there's cafeteria down on what's called the U... UP? UP section of the elevator. Not in the elevator, it's, you have to get out and make a... Okay.